The zoning commission to order. First order is appointment of alternates and we are missing two regular members. So we have Melissa and Jackie, they're appointed to serve. Okay. First order of business is the approval of the minutes of May 16th. We do not have the sixth, May, June 6th minutes. There any comments or corrections? I didn't see anything. Pretty short minutes anyway.
I'll move their approval.
Okay, Kevin moved it second by.
Me, Diane.
Diane, Diane, Donna, da, 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 da. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
One abstention. Okay. Minutes are disposed of. Now. Tonight's real business is the general commission business. First order of business is the referral from our planning director. In response to our, his, their request to amend condition number 13, we ask that he prepare a bond for us to consider in exchange for leaving this constraint. Anybody have any comments about that? George, you want to tell us about it?
Jim, just what you've, you've got a, underneath your packets, you've got a revised memo. It's not significantly revised from the packet, but I did just want to note. So the applicant provided a revised estimate for the construction of the building. That was based upon some additional review by your town building official, who added some, several fire suppression line items. I think the one we sent out was like 526, now it's 611. We have drafted a condition and we have added to the condition, really two items based upon conversations with the town attorney. And then you can see that in red. And again, that was the applicant, this is the applicant's proposal and the applicant voluntarily will agree to submit a bond. I think it's important to note that this is not kind of an antagonistic, if you choose to go with that condition, not an antagonistic kind of requirement of the commission. You're kind of agreeing to a proposal from the applicant. We added, can be a bond or any other type of surety. And we included a draft motion in the affirmative, if that's where you wanted to go. So no substantive comments from the town attorney. He says that a condition like this is appropriate. And it's up to the commission to decide how they want to do that. Again, you don't have the specific legal document of a surety bond. We added in the condition that the town staff will review that with the help of the town attorney. So the form has to be acceptable to the town in that fashion.
Good, okay.
The draft condition in the memo was provided to the applicant.
Okay. The applicant have anything to say?
Mr. Chairman, we appreciate your attention to this matter. We do want to put on the record that we will very willingly post a bond in the amount that suggested and be very pleased with that. The effect of this will be to preserve the concept of multiple uses at the site, specifically the two commercial uses. It will preserve the idea that two vibrant commercial uses at the entry of Talbot Ridge will frame it and open it up. It will, with all the design enhancements guided by the design review board and this board, enhance the aesthetics of the site. And our hope is that while one structure has been there for five years as an orphan, we're hopeful that this new well-designed site will have two uses there. Plus with the raising of the census of the site to completion, we think that that might be significant amendment to have two successful commercial uses there. And that's our goal, but we willingly submit, will submit the bond and we appreciate your attention.
Thank you. Comments from commissioners? It satisfies me.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I was not privy to all the conversations that went on.
Well, they're asking us to release them from the 90% constraint because they haven't completed the second phase. The second commercial building. And they're willing to put up a bond to assure the completion of that if we release them from that so they can finish the apartments. And they say they have, I think it's eight apartments that they have tenants ready for and they could move in. And there's 12 more that they'd like to complete.
There are additional units, but with the eight, just to hope that you can move forward quickly, we have eight families who want to move into those units. The units are CO ready, but the CO can't issue until this board takes this action tonight. In fact, children has them staying in hotels in town until year.
The only thing that is missing is there's no commitment to ever complete this?
That was my question, is there an estimated date?
We have a bond, but we don't, doesn't give a date when we could take, when we could take an option on the bond.
Have a comment about that?
The way I look at it is that bond can't be released until either it's completed or this board makes an alternate decision later on. But the hope is that it will be completed and be rented and then of course it would.
Kevin, is your question different though? When can we draw down on the bond if they haven't done it?
Yeah, 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 this could go forever. And you just hold a bond and it's a pretty cheap way out. We would prefer to see the building, not the bond.
Will you see a full structure of the building?
When?
They're under, they're under.
All right, well, can we have, can we, you know, is it okay with you if we add some kind of date, a projected date on when this is going to be built?
The structure will be done December of this year.
So last meeting you thought four months, you said to us. So that would be October.
And he just told me.
December, that's close enough.
December, December's fine.
The bond is, it's primarily that, that bond is probably going to include an expiration date of a year or a renewal date of a year. I mean, I would recommend a year, typically how it's going to be framed in the bond document.
I would offer that, I was willing to vote to approve it just because we need more housing in Simsbury. There's a long waiting list for people who don't have places to go right now. So I would have approved it without, but I think we do need some kind of renewal date or expiration date, just so we're not held in limbo if we're going to go the route of the bond.
Well, the applicants agreed to December, so I think we could.
What happens if, you know, the inflation costs are right? Now, one of my questions was, is this bond estimate based on today's inflation rates or tomorrow's or, I mean, costs are kind of incomprehensible at this time. So do we want to lock them into something that is cost prohibitive at some point in time? Do we want some kind of renewal ability if inflation or costs or supply chain problems get in the way?
We're talking about six months. I think we can ignore inflation for the moment, even though we can't.
TJ's client cannot, but okay.
Let's not make it more complicated than it is already.
Okay.
At least that's my opinion.
Just my two cents.
Now, the only alternative that would be a bond for a higher amount to build in a contingency to it.
I don't hear TJ's client raising the concerns though.
No, anybody over here have comments?
No, I was thinking the same thing as Kevin, just as long as we have some sort of a date. I mean, in mind, that's.
Which has got to be decided.
Yeah, which is, then I'm fine.
I'm not in favor of bonding, which I said at the last meeting. I think that the building should be completed.
Okay. And we're ready to make a motion on this. Kevin, do you want to make a motion with your amendment?
Okay, I move to amend condition number 13 of application, ZC number 17-10 in the following manner with the condition that the building be completed by the end of December 2022. 13A, notwithstanding above conditions, 13 residential certificates of occupancy shall be issued above the 90% threshold to a maximum of 100% of the approved units, 299, if the applicant voluntarily submits a bond or other types of surety in the amount of $611,000 with form and substance acceptable to the town of Simsbury for the cost of the uncompleted commercial shell building, reference zoning commission 22-12. I change the order.
Wait a second.
So moved.
Second by Melissa Osborne. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, any abstaining? Okay, so we've got four, one and one. Okay? Thank you. Next order of business is the accessory dwelling unit regulations. George has prepared a draft of the regulations with the modifications that we had asked him to at the last meeting. So first order of business is for people to comment on the draft that they've got in front of them. Anybody have comments on it? Hearing none?
It's been a while since we've used these and I.
Are you reading them?
No, I went back to the homepage.
Kevin, I did that twice last time.
She can put it on the screen.
Highlight the changes maybe.
It's up there.
Yeah, that's.
So the real two substantive changes are we need to, maybe look at. Attached accessory dwelling units. We changed the on record, oh, excuse me, section B. We changed the 25% to 30% through your comments last time. I was like, that's pretty much it in both sections. Then we also changed the final page, the ADA compliance accommodations. That's also been added to it, a section C.
So the key, the key thing to note for your approach is we're allowing a base, no matter the size of the primary dwelling unit, of 600 square feet. Or 30% of the floor square area, whatever is greater. So it really means that it's kind of setting on a smaller unit, you're going to have at least a minimum of 600 square feet to, for an accessory dwelling.
Or 60. Right, it's 10% more.
Or 10% for.
Or it's built to those standards, correct?
Yeah, and that was, I think Donna made the comment that the smaller units, they need more flexibility, smaller houses. It's more difficult situation. She was actually, I think, doing a unit for somebody and said, you know, it's, when you do 30% of 1,000, it's very, very tough to get it, something that's usable. Anyway, so we, I think Melissa made the suggestion.
I did, I did.
Yes.
I have a question about the word choice though. And I understand why we chose these words about within the footprint. So I just want to make sure that it doesn't, that it's not interpreted in such a way as if somebody cannot make an addition to the primary house that is fully attached to the primary house and have that be part of the footprint. I know what we're trying to get away from is like the catwalk that makes the attached dwelling, right? So how do we, I just could, my concern is that by saying within the footprint, that would somehow be interpreted to prohibit an addition, a fully attached addition, because it's not within the current footprint.
But they'd have to put the addition on and then apply for an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay.
They could put the addition on without, you're just going to building department.
Well, you don't want them to do that though. I mean, they want to know, before they put on addition, they want to know they're going to.
Well, if they meet the reg, they, you know, essentially.
It has to be a fully attached.
But I agree with Melissa, I read it that way too, that we want to make sure that all we're saying is that it has to be within the footprint, but it doesn't, you could add on and it still be within the footprint. All right.
So I meant, so what we were trying to work with here is we were trying to draw the distinction between attached and detached, right?
Right.
So we were trying, we did want that.
The breezeway makes the long skinny hallway.
We wanted to show that that was clearly a detached unit that was.
Right.
And that an attached unit was part of the primary structure.
Right.
If you have an addition, we would, we would consider that part of the primary structure.
Right, but the addition can't be attached by a long skinny hallway. So I just want to make sure that we somehow, whether it's legislative history or whatever you want to call it, encompassed within, how are we going to phrase that?
See, the footprint of the primary dwelling unit is an important concept.
Yep, it is. No, it is, it is.
And however they reach that, if they're going to add on a room to their primary dwelling unit, that expands the footprint of the primary dwelling unit.
That's how we would certainly interpret it.
Well, that's just site plan approval, so.
And that's just site plan approval.
Right, it's on both phases, so then we don't need to worry about that, right?
Right.
I'm talking myself through it. The other thing I thought was there's a section in both the attached and detached about the, how is it? Shall it comply with all the billing, health and fire prevention codes?
So that's in your current, that's in the current one today.
I think it's worth adding something to the effect of, and all setback requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
That's interesting you say it that way because I would almost take the opposite approach because that actually, that sentence isn't, isn't. Of course, any structure has to be.
Well, that's why I was saying we should add setback. Because since we are saying it has to be these other things that they already have to meet, then we should say the other things that have to, lest by implication, it be that it doesn't. You know what I mean?
Too many attorneys here.
Either take the whole thing out or add it all in.
No, I'm fine with what we have. And I mean, I guess I'm comfortable knowing that any applicant is coming in front of staff.
Right.
So they're.
Correct.
Right.
So I don't think we have to write that.
And we want some kind of notice to people though. Again, it's going.
Like it's not a shed, you know?
But a shed has setbacks too.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would just defer to staff.
Yeah, we're making it too difficult.
That's my job.
Yeah. I'm fine.
Donna, where are you? Anyway. Anybody have any other comments?
I think it looks good.
Nope, I think it looks good, yep. I thought it looked very good.
Okay, do you have a motion to set a public hearing?
Not yet.
How about we at least touch upon anticipated timeline for a public hearing? Try to figure that out because we're in December, it gets a little weird, right? You only meet once in July on the 18th. And you meet zero times in August.
That's.
So it really constitutes a special meeting.
Why can't we meet, why can't we have a public hearing on the 18th?
We don't have enough time to advertise the.
You don't have time to advertise it?
Well, it's not so much advertising, there's also the referral requirements. We need at least 30 days before we consider a public hearing at the bare minimum.
You have referrals to towns and, and.
Do we want to wait till September?
So it'll be the first meeting in September? Do we don't have the first meeting in September, do we?
We don't have the first meeting in September either.
Yeah. How about? With the board of selectmen's?
Well, what about the last week in July?
What about the last Monday in July?
Yeah, the 25th.
We don't have a meeting.
Have a special meeting.
To do a special.
Set a special meeting for the 25th of July.
I will actually be here. I can do.
We'd like to get this done in time for the selectmen to ponder it.
I'll be here. Diane said she'd be here.
I can be here.
I probably can't be here.
We could do a special meeting on this weekend.
Let's plan it, we can always revise it.
Mr. Chairman, if this matters, the board of selectmen do meet on August 8th. Our July meeting, we only have one in July and that's on July 11th. So if you met on the 25th, that would be before our August 8th meeting. That's the only meeting that we have in August.
That's fine, we just want to get it done by July so that the selectmen have plenty of time.
We might not be ready for you in August. If.
Right, I'm just letting you know that we have a meeting on August 8th. And then we don't meet again until September.
So it sounds like that works then.
Yeah, we'll get our public hearing started.
Right. Okay, could we have a motion to set a public hearing in this, on the 25th, is it?
Yes.
At a special meeting on the 25th of July at 7 o'clock in this room.
I make that motion?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. Okay, it carries 6-0. We will have a special meeting on July 25th to consider the ADU adoption. Okay, the next order of business is cannabis regulations. I even was able to say it this time, cannabis. Got a lot of trouble with that.
So I was hoping tonight that we could talk significantly about location and location preferences. Now, again, I'm firmly assuming we're drafting orders that are permitted cannabis establishments in the community. If you want to go along with the direction, you can allow us to know.
Hey Dave, I'm going to move down to the other spot because it's difficult to see the.
You have that big screen in front of you, okay?
So with that, you know, a couple of topics that I really just give to you and let you know, which is, first is location, right? You have to assign both retail cannabis, really try and keep it simple. Two uses essentially, retail cannabis and cultivation, processing, manufacturing, all kind of in its own category. I would, I'd remind you that the way the town Simsbury treats the medical or the medicinal approach, the zoning ordinance allows it in our regular townwide regulations, in our B1, 2 and 3 districts. And for retail medicinal, we cap it at two total uses. And for cultivating, cultivation, it's permitted in both I1 and I2 districts. So that's how we deal with, we previously dealt with use. So it does make some sense to at least follow that at the outset. But again, we have B1 and B2 and B3 in lots of different places in our community, you know, beyond just the hot metal corner. Do you have the zoning map? And I can put that out and put that right in front of you. But so that's, that's kind of the starting point. You know, where do they go?
And at this point, just to clarify, aren't we only permitted based on size to have one?
We're not.
They changed that?
They changed this?
Oh, really?
No, no limit now.
First week of June, the governor signed a revised, revised legislation that lifted the cap.
Oh, wow.
On retail cannabis locations.
So if we want to limit, we can, but the state.
Okay, because we could, because there's certain other states that have passed these and they have, they're like Dunkin' Donuts now.
So I mean, our impression again is, at some point, obviously we'll have the town attorney involved once we have written things, but our impression is, is that since the legislation allows the local government to prohibit an outright, that a cap is all, would be also permissible.
Well, where does the cap on the retail alcohol shops come from? Is that a state?
So that is, that is, that's, yes, that's a state per cap of the number. And we talked about this last time.
Okay, so they kept it in for alcohol, but not for cannabis?
That's, that's what we're experiencing, yes.
Right.
It's natural.
Yes.
So Avon's prohibited entirely.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yep.
Granby is still thinking about it.
Correct.
Yep.
And Bluefield.
And I guess, you know, you said, starting point would be that, but I'm thinking, starting point is, do we want to allow it at all?
That is a starting point.
Of course.
So I'll just say, yes, I think we do want to allow it, from my opinion. Where we want to put it and what restrictions we want to put on it is a different conversation, but my vote would be yes on that.
Anybody else? It's not a permanent vote.
I really hadn't thought about it. And I guess I'm not opposed to it. Because if we allow an alcohol, you know, an alcohol store, why not a cannabis store?
Seems to be pretty much all throughout the country now.
I am not opposed to it, but I would really like to limit it, like, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Dunkin' Donuts analogy is a little scary, so.
It is scary, in the. I will say, last summer I visited my son who lives in a state with legalized marijuana, where it's been legalized for quite some time recreationally, and I was shocked. You know, I couldn't walk down the street without smelling cannabis in the summer. And it definitely had a deleterious effect on the downtown area. There's no doubt about it. So I would, I would be in favor of, while we should, I believe, have it here, of limiting the areas so that it doesn't affect the.
We can limit the area that a retail shop can be.
Right.
I think it's up to the selectmen to deal with where you smoke it.
Yep, oh, sure, yep, sure. But I think that where we, where we sell it can, can affect the atmosphere and the.
True.
You know, the aura, for lack of a better word.
I would have to go further on that. Like I would want to prohibit it if there's a B1 or such area on West Street because of the high school.
Oh, sure, wouldn't want it near any of the schools.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Well, we do need to control the, what, where it is.
Yes.
If there's more than one. I thought the one was.
One seems like a good number to me.
One seems good to me, yeah.
Yeah, sounded fine, but.
And we can always expand.
There are some on 44 already. Well, you know, I heard Talbot Ridge.
No, they're CBD.
I heard Talbot Ridge is having a hard time getting commercial space.
Well, it's sort of similar, but I. I want you to believe.
Well, the market has also limited CBD.
They have the empty. That's right, they need tenants.
Already someone has gone out of business because there's not enough market for the CBDs, the supply that we were providing.
Free samples, I don't know what it does for you.
So some of them have already gone out of business and you could do that if you do this too.
Okay, George has the map for us.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have the big, the map there and I can put that right in front of you if that's more helpful. Just as, you know, as a reminder, obviously we have, our, our commercial nodes are here. So you start kind of on the north end of town, you've got the North Village Cluster, Big Y, et cetera, right? That's where I am. Yeah. So if you go down, of course, center zone is its own, its own zone, its own form-based code, but we have heard comments about so, but obviously that's a mixed use. It certainly includes plenty of, of retail uses. Go down a little further, down Hot Meadow, obviously Hot Meadow is the primary corridor. You get into, we tog a little bit, and so there's a smattering of retail uses in B1 and B2 in there. You go further down, really kind of across the street from the ridges, there's a little bit of B1 and some commercial use. I think there's a PAD down there as well where the Cumberland Farm is. But certainly there are, are retail uses. Then of course, the big B3 node, which is our, you know, the destination node at the corner of Canton and Aon off of 44.
Has anybody approached, looking for approval for this yet? Like, are there people who are clamoring to open up anything?
Still needs to secure their state licenses. So there's a few steps that they'd have to be able to do beforehand. I know the lottery for certain situations is just open and I think closed. They, they're working on the process at the state level still.
If we were to decide to cap it at one, how would we open it up?
If you wanted to change the gap at a later date?
No, 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 how would we, how would we entertain?
So I say it this way, you're going to.
Applicants.
So Stan is certainly going to recommend that you review these, like you review liquor stores and alcoholic uses by special exception. So you'll have a special exception process. Depending on whether you add additional criteria, you do have kind of good significant criteria in your special exception today, you know, is compatible and what's the impacts on public case? You know, is compatible, and what's the impact on public safety, of some theme welfare? They theme welfare, traffic, those kinds of things. I suspect that if you like the first one you get, and it's the right location, you may only go through the process once. You know, it's going to be based on your approvals and the ability to secure a license. I imagine that one of the conditions of approval, the applicant shall obtain state license within six months of approval, so they don't lock up the you know, the singular permit. It's going to be case by case. You may go through a number of them that you don't think meets your, you know, the best location for it.
Well, what criteria can we establish that allows us to say, okay, only one? Because if I was, if I was somebody in that business and I was number two, I might go to Superior Court and say, you guys are totally unreasonable.
Yep.
I feel like the original state recommendation and cap that based off of population,
there you go.
will be over 25,000 anytime, I mean, recurring.
Yeah, but they changed that, so...
But they did originally suggest it, so.
So it wouldn't be considered, it would not be arbitrary and capricious then?
Yes.
Right. And they would still have to follow the special exception.
Right.
We do have medical facilities.
Right, but without...
They don't have retail.
And can we limit it within a zone, so that you can say within, with
Yes.
We could certainly not have it allowed in certain zones.
Okay, no, but no, but if we permit it in a zone, let's say it's you know, a commercial zone, B1, can we say only certain B1s, or is it, once you say B1, it's all B1s?
No, I think you can add, I mean, I do think that you can add kind of reasonable criteria. B1 with frontage on Hot Meadow, or B1 no closer, yeah, whatever, north of some intersection, or. And I do think it's appropriate, I mean, I think it's okay for you to find the right place where you want to put them, so that they are not, you know, blank, not blanketed, because that wouldn't be permitted everywhere. You could insert distance requirements, for instance, from residential or schools or churches or...
Except for the Rockford and Suckerfields.
You know, those kinds of things, yeah. You could, hey, you don't have any distance requirements for alcohol, I know that, you don't.
But I think a lot of those got struck down, didn't they, by the state?
There used to be with, between schools and churches and everything, and that's
They changed that.
I think that's allowed anymore. Is there a commercial
It's a great use for them.
Zone within Terracille?
Holy Smokes, they get a lot of parking. There you go.
Between, just in the mill, or is there?
Yeah, but it's not very near to the school.
So if you look at that, I'm...
The school is right there.
Yeah. I'm just saying.
It's right near Terracille School.
Wait, which, which are we talking?
The zone that we're talking about, Terracille.
Yeah, you know, I was saying, let's put it in, let's put it in St. Bernard's, you know? There are a lot of parking.
Yeah, I said, a friend of mine was going to open up a barbecue place called Holy Smokes, but this might be a better bet.
Yep.
I have no idea what's going on.
The mill isn't that close to the, I mean, everything's...
Immediately thinking Terracille. Everybody would drive right through Elm Street then, you know?
Yeah.
And there's your B1.
And there is a school right there.
There is.
There will be one of these.
Yeah.
That's where the barber shop is and the...
No, that's residential.
That's right from the school.
I think this is almost all residential.
There's a liquor store right there.
Yeah, so it's only around, it's only the mill.
The other ones down there. Yeah.
It's against you, it may exist in residential, but zone is business, right?
Yeah, it's, no.
I would not want to...
I'm just going to speak up for all of us in Terracille.
No.
Probably not our choice, no.
Well, my concern was, if we say it's available in B1s, if that includes Terracille, that's what I was going for.
To follow up on that, then, I would say, not within a school.
Right.
You know, that's too close.
Around 44. Restricted to 44.
Well, that would be, so the Bushy Hill corridor.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all orange, I mean, that's fine. We could do that.
Or you can say just the Silverman property. So the building gets built.
We should put it at Tuckett Ridge, they need a commercial tenant, right?
You guys.
They can release their bond now, we're saving a bunch of money.
Do you see where you started? I like that suggestion, Mr. Chairman. Um, Bushy Hill, the Bushy Hill.
Right, yeah, actually.
So what are we saying at down?
We're in Bushy Hill.
It's the corner of
44.
Simsbury, Avon, Canton.
Oh, like where the Shell Station, that area?
Start with DZ.
So what, what's that, is that B3?
Like the empty Munsons, you mean?
So here, I think this is our, you know, obviously, this is our
Right next to McDonald's.
Heaviest, most traveled, most traffic retail area.
Right.
So it would make sense.
The Staples, the McDonald's, the
Here, for instance.
Car dealers.
And what is that zone, I can't...
B3.
So that's B3.
So we could limit it just to B3, how many B3s do we have?
So not that much.
Where are the other ones?
Uh, there's one right in the middle of Hot Meadow though, so we have to be careful, I don't know what that is.
I think there's also, we can...
Yeah, so there's here.
Oh, yeah.
Where is that?
Where is that?
Well, somebody's there.
Is that near Latimer Lane? Yeah.
Is that where the tennis?
Could be.
It's on the wrong side of the street.
That's on the...
It's on the opposite side of the street.
No, it's not, don't look at the green line, the green line is the trail.
It's on the north.
The white line is the town.
But it's on the north side.
So that's Mitchell's.
No.
That's probably the tennis.
So that's Latimer Lane, no, that's, that's Tuckett Ridge. That's the Hartford, that's the Hartford spot.
That's the green.
The pink is Hartford, isn't it?
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 so the green line, the green line is the trail.
Simsbury Inn?
About the road, okay.
Correct.
Is that what that is?
No, because that's, that's Latimer.
So, Kevin, that, that orange, I mean, it's possible, that's the B3, and that's possible, but I don't know that that's the best spot for retail.
Can you expand that a little?
No, I'm trying to figure out, if we just say B3, how many are opening up to?
Can you expand that orange spot above, over on the right side?
Have a better idea of what we're looking at there.
Make the map larger?
Yeah. Nope.
Oh, and then you gotta scroll, yeah.
It's got so many bosses.
Sorry.
What street is that? I just can't see.
Okay, so here's, here's Hot Meadow.
So it's right near Latimer School, so that's the tennis club, like you said.
Yeah, so the greens are the Hartford site.
Got it.
Get right here in green.
Oh.
That's the tennis court.
This is why they talk about the south and southern part.
And probably my, you know, Hot Meadow Animal Hospital's right there.
Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
Um, George, there's another orange further north
Okay.
on the map. I'm guessing that's probably...
Actually, this is how to do this.
Okay.
This is actually how to do it. So there's We Todd with the B2s.
Yeah, we're sticking with B3 for a second.
Yeah, I know.
So I think it's Big Y is the next one.
I think they're B2 though, aren't they?
Okay.
Yeah, B2, so there's the big Y.
So there's only two, Kevin? Two B3s?
Uh, I'm almost up to Granby.
Oh, you know what, there's one on the west where Anna's in the...
Oh, yeah, West, yeah.
Tom Meadow, West Mary.
West Simsbury is a B3?
That's a B3.
The Simsbury Plaza.
What is the criteria of B3? Do you have the regs?
I do.
Someone's in Hollis Park, wasn't it? Was that with Hollis Park?
I don't see that much difference.
Well, I think we would probably want to constrain it by a route that
By 440, so B3 within
44.
B3 is our least restrictive.
Oh.
Okay.
And West Simsbury is the least restrictive?
So we could say B3 south of West Street?
Or just say B3
B3 within the 600, 300 feet or whatever of Hot Meadow, the same thing we did for the
Of 44. I like that.
Are there no other B3s? That's it?
Yeah, just the three.
What do you say, two, three?
Okay, three.
Yeah.
One, two, three. What was the second?
Well, there's no others, there are no other ones close to 44. So if we constrain it by 44.
Is that how we restrict our drive-throughs? How do we restrict drive-throughs? What's the term?
We don't.
We don't?
We permit them by special exceptions on the restaurant use. We don't have a singular category that...
But you're saying... We've just been very successful at it. Okay.
I like that.
Yeah, I could be good with that.
And you'd get the Avon business too, since they
Yeah, Avon will be thrilled. They're like right next to that.
Since it's prohibited in Avon. Of course, you do have to submit it to the, to the region, so they would be able to comment on it.
I guess my only thing is, while we don't want to dump it on the north end, do we want to allow an opportunity on the north end?
I'm fine with having one, and let's see how this goes.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly, my concern is, if we have it in the north end, we're going to have everybody driving through town to, you know, like, on 44, they've got their route, they can go, you know, but like, I don't...
If there's a 44, that gets the Avon Canton business, right? And if it's on the north end, then that gets the Granby and whatever else business.
Right.
But Granby might lift the moratorium.
And then nobody, neither, neither group comes through Simsbury then to get to it.
Well, but that's not true. Like Diane's saying, you're going to have traffic if you put it at the north end.
No, but if you've got one at the south end, oh, people go that way. If you get one the north end, you go that way. But then people don't come through Simsbury to get to it. You know, coming from Granby to Route 44.
I'm not loving it, because Bloomfield's got a moratorium, Granby's got a moratorium, so everyone's going to be cutting through Terracille to get to the dispensary.
I see what you mean, I see what you mean.
I think it's flying.
Remember, those moratoriums are limited.
Of course, of course, of course.
Right.
But yeah, I would be more inclined to go into the more business area.
Route 44.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So B3, but only Route 44? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah, on our signs, we did within a certain footage of Route 44. I don't remember if that was 300 or 600 feet.
Yeah, so
We've suspended the signs for a minute though.
I know, but I was going to use the same rule.
Same rule, yeah.
If you can light up an internal lit sign, you can have...
Light it up.
I knew where he was going with that. That's great.
Sick person.
Feel very childish tonight.
We have to have a little levity to this subject.
So what we're saying is that we would like staff to prepare a positive retail with one unit permitted in town on constrained to 44 in B3, or B3 near 44. And that we'd like to have you guys draft something that meets that so that when we come in September, we can have something to talk about and wordsmith and get ready to deal with it.
That would be great.
Do you have enough to go on?
So no. I do not have enough to go on. No, I just want to make it clear, we would use we permit them by spec, permitted by special, special exception, a maximum of one.
Right.
Any additional criteria besides a distance as discussed relative to the sign or that's, distance from 44 to Canton and Avon.
Do you have to say anything about the license in there?
I don't, I don't know that you, we do, I mean, the licenses and it may have some, maybe we'll add language relative to a condition that if you lose a license, maybe that condition only happens upon approval. May think about that, I don't know whether it's in the ordinance.
Is the state going to require that they have local approval before they'll approve the license, like they do in alcohol?
I understand that they're doing it in almost two phases, where you get like a preliminary approval and then and then kind of a conditional, you come back with the local license or the local approval.
Right, since your approval goes with the property. All right, so, so we're approving, you know, I don't know what 100 Route 44 is, and they don't build. We now have, that's the only place in town that can be built.
So we're, we're going to recommend that we have some sort of condition that states that if you don't get your license and construct within a period of time, see how that does.
Yeah, but then, but even if they, they do, and they go out of business, how, you know, when, how can you remove the approval from that property?
Yeah, because it runs with the land.
Yeah.
But if we limit it to one...
Well, you can approve it, they can go in, then they fail.
Yeah, but, but we could not give them final approval until they were
Let us think about that.
No, no, the business fails, five years from now, they fail.
Then they go out of business?
Yeah, they go out of business, but you've given approval for that piece of property to have a cannabis license forever.
And it's the only one.
But, but could we conceivably, like, then you just give approval to another property that fits the same criteria, and then nobody can do the first one, because they can only do one, and now somebody else is in another one?
Yeah, can you do that?
Would that work?
We've, we've
That would be
Let us come back with options on that.
That would be difficult, because there are constraints on abandoning abandoning uses like that.
I've seen places use language that you can't have more than one operating at the city, you know, if you're doing that, then you can say, well, the land use may be approved there, but we've already got a certificate of documents for one here, so you don't get to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe there's language that we can, we can look at there.
So they go and assassinate the other guy.
But no other, no other separation, or we've got a cap. Okay, so I'm clear there.
Does it need to be a maximum size? Can you be the cannabis mart of Connecticut? And, yeah, I don't know, have
Now, you've got a special exception process that'll, that'll get
Okay, but I don't know if the reg should maximize.
Not the cannabis depot?
We should put a cap on the size of the
Of the building, of the building that you would be allowed to do this in.
Oh, they've got the liquor depot.
You know, we don't cap any other uses.
Right.
Well, should we though? You want to have
We say we don't.
A big box cannabis store?
They might do it really well.
If there's a big box on 44, I don't really care.
I mean, yeah, it's a different kind of use, and this is a kind of use that has preconceived notions, all those different kinds of things. But it acts and looks like a retail use. And I think that's something to remember. And then you should, you should treat it that way.
Don't we have Don't we have...
If it pays taxes like a retail...
If we're concerned about square footage in our buildings, then we should talk about all our retail buildings.
But don't we have a constraint on retail?
We do.
Retail size?
B1 and B2, it's a different permitting process, based off of square footage. Sometimes it requires a special exception, and sometimes it's a site plan, if I remember correctly.
But we don't have a limit in that area.
Not necessarily that you can't do it.
Looking at the dealership, Staples, Liquor Depot, I mean, looking...
You've got, you know, Stop and Shop, and that's probably the biggest.
Well, I'm just talking that...
Yeah, but all of those are like less than 20,000 square feet.
Look, you know what, don't take anything off the table, let us look at whether there's best practices on that.
Okay.
Sure, I mean, that makes sense.
Yeah, we got time.
Remember, it's not the only kind of use, we also have cultivation and processing. Obviously, we've got one here, you know, in our community. So I don't know what our recommendation is going to be on that, but either we just lift the medicinal language and just say cultivation and allow it in I1 and I2.
Yeah, has our current manufacturer asked you at all about, you know, the ability, I mean, once you're making it, what difference does it make what use it goes to?
They have.
And they would like to be able to do recreational use.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so you might consider that too, lifting that limitation.
Growing is growing, like you said, if they're not selling it.
Keep it simple, just, just keep it where it is in the ordinance and in the sections, and then...
Allow either use, yeah, the final use we don't care about.
Yeah, and it's, it's pretty well hidden and secreted. So it's all totally indoor?
And then finally, I just would want to note, it seems to me that we would also need to amend both center zone and Hartford-Simsbury to expressly exclude or prohibit the use, right?
The retail.
Well, no, well, there's no B3, so, right, that's what I'm hearing, is that we don't want them in those districts.
Right.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Please.
So that amendment will include three parts, because we've got three ordinances.
Right. And also the housing, whatever it is, workforce housing zone can't be there either.
Just an over there. I think...
So that's it?
I think that's...
Dates though, I think we should.
You want us to go back in September, is that what you're asking?
Because we, the moratoriums have to be better.
Moratoriums November 8, remember that, November 8.
And we won't be able to schedule a public hearing before that, so you might want...
You know what, how about we just give you some language to look at July 18?
Okay.
That'd be great.
That makes me nervous waiting all the way till September.
I mean, I don't feel like this is a super complicated thing, so I would think that, I mean, I think July would be fine for us to look at it.
Could we do a double public hearing on ADUs and cannabis? Do it on July 25th?
I'm not going to be ready for that.
No.
Or else I'm going to be ready for that.
Got it, got it.
I'm not going to be ready for that.
Can we do cannabis in August as a public?
This is where I was just, let us get your language on the 18.
And then we have to figure out, maybe we can schedule a fair...
Then we could.
If we're not happy with the situation, we can always extend...
A moratorium.
I feel like, especially with cannabis, I feel like cannabis is going to bring out perhaps some emotions, and I feel like if we try to do a special meeting in August, people are going to think we're like trying to sneak it by while everybody's on vacation.
I suggest having that.
September seems like my beer.
There's nobody in town in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's nobody, exactly, nobody around, and, you know, I guess so.
If you can do a little comparison too, against some of the ones that have approved in the area?
Yeah. I've done that.
Yeah, okay.
That'd be great.
All right, I think we're done for the night.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion?
I would like a motion.
And make a motion to adjourn?
I would second.
Any debate?
Well, I'm not sure about a word choice.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.